Hi, my name's Michael Miller. I wanted just a couple of minutes here. I have two kids in the elementary QPS. I'm very worried that our community is moving to a community that bases its decisions, its policy decisions, not on empirical data, subject matter experts, but instead on emotions, dogmas, and really whoever can have the loudest voice. I think we should strive as a school system to use data and information in real time to assess both the costs and the risks of our public policy decisions. And I think the costs of not wearing masks are relatively quantifiable, just from increased cases, hospitalizations, deaths, et cetera. I'm somewhat unclear, as I think maybe others are, as to what the cost of wearing the masks are. I do think undoubtedly there are costs to wearing the masks, as the doctor just alluded to with his daughter. But outside of those anecdotes, I don't see where that's really quantified in the loss of leveling and other productivity measures. So it seems to me that we want to get rid of the masks because we're all tired of them. We don't want to be told to wear them anymore. And I echo this sentiment, I feel the same. But I don't think that's a valid reason to change public policy because we've all decided we're fatigued of this and it's been a year and we can't do it anymore. The current CDC guidelines, as I read them and understand them, recommend that all unvaccinated people indoors should wear masks. And I believe that then all of the elementary schools' kids will be in that category, that profile, once we get into the fall. So since none of us here that I believe are epidemiologists or virologists, I think we need more counter evidence that's quantified, or at least larger costs that can be associated with wearing the masks if we're going to ignore the subject matter experts in the CDC. I would leave you with just this quick analogy. If there was a bridge in Quincy that a structural engineer told us was not safe and we should not drive on it, and we would have to take a two-mile detour around it every single day, if we did that for a year, and then we got decided that, you know what, I'm very tired of driving, this is a nuisance for me to have to do and I'm going to drive two miles around every day, I don't think that most of us would shirk that structural engineer, the subject matter expert in that case is advice, and drive across that unsafe bridge. So I would just ask that the school board take that logic into consideration when they vote tonight. Thank you.
Any other comments from the?
My name is Jody Cook and I have a daughter in junior high school. I wrote things down so I wouldn't forget. I'm sure I have the same things to say about school masks as many other people, but while we collectively share many of the same opinions, we are all individuals and we need to be heard as individuals. They say follow the science, while science says masks don't work, and it doesn't take science to have common sense. It is common sense to see masks are disgusting. I am a nurse, and seeing these kids wearing masks makes me sick. The amount of moisture and filth on them and the fact that many of kids don't wash their masks every day is completely unhealthy and will likely actually make them sicker with something else if not COVID. Masks are like a screen door. It may keep out the big things, but dust and microscopic organisms can still come in. And if it's wet, stuff will stick to it, including pathogens. Moist or wet masks can trap and harbor a variety of bacteria, mold, fungus, mildew, and viruses too, and all of them are small enough to go through masks as well. Being stuck on a moist, wet environment will only help them grow and make our kids sick, not to mention the acne they are causing. I wash my child's mask every day, she washed her face morning and night, and she still got acne from being all over her face all day. Kids touch their mask, drop them, pinch them, lick them, suck on them, chew on them, stick their tongue out on them, leaving whatever bacteria is from their mouth all over the inside of their mask, all over their face, all day. It's gross. They sneeze in them, cough in them, scratch their nose and their mouth, threw the masks and rubbed their runny noses in them, and laid them down on sanitary surfaces, leave them in the car, and many wear them for days on end without being washed or changed. Show me the science that says that is healthy or safe. You cannot control thousands of students to wear them properly or to take care of them properly. Studies pre-COVID have proven they don't work. These scientific studies don't magically change because COVID came around. I did my research during the shutdown and I had nothing but time to look all of this up. Studies have also proven the disgusting growth of diseases on masks. Most places in this town don't require masks with the exception of some medical facilities, and kids have been all over this town to stores, gathering together, in parks, daycares, summer camps, and it seems rather ludicrous to mask them while they're in school. It has proven that kids don't even get COVID anywhere near as bad as older people, and most don't get it at all. Science has proven all of this, so why aren't we listening to this science? And let's not even talk about the amount of stress caused from forcing healthy kids to quarantine and their grade paying the price for it like mine did, masks, restrictions, distancing, not being able to see each other's faces, and teachers that were constantly drilling it into their head to pull their masks up, sanitize their hands, clean their desks, stay away from each other, and snapping at kids who weren't following the rules. One went even so far as to give them multiple updates every week, how many COVID cases there were, how many deaths there were in Adams County, which was completely unnecessary and added more stress to an already stressful school year, which created a whole new set of problems. Like when my concern over that was voiced, the teacher ended up being snarky with my child and singling her out on a regular basis. And when that was reported, my child told she was misinterpreting things, which made her feel like she was being called a liar. The only solution offered was to move her halfway through the school year to a class where she didn't know anyone, which wouldn't solve the problem, it would only create more problems of her feeling like she was being punished for reporting what was happening in her class. She chose to stay in her class because she finally had friends and wasn't being bullied by other kids. But the entire 2021 school year completely stressed her out on several levels, and now she has anxiety where she used to have none. And all because of the obsessing over restrictions and kids constantly being harped on and snapped at, including about masks. And she's not the only child in this district who has experienced that this past school year. Their identity has been hidden under a mask long enough. They need to see each other's faces and each other's smiles. We were given facial expressions for a reason: to communicate. One teacher didn't know who my child was in public because she didn't have her mask on, and that's just sad. Our kids have been unselfish and have sacrificed for well over a year for other people and are needlessly suffering over these restrictions, and it needs to stop. Masks should be optional. We should not have to sacrifice our children's mental health so other people can feel safe. Our children's health is our problem, not yours. If people want to truly feel safe... If people truly want to feel safe, they can choose to stay home. If other people feel masks really work, then fine, wear them. But I have to ask, if you and your child are wearing a mask and you truly believe they work, then why does it matter if mine doesn't? Keep our children unmasked.
Said, or Shelley, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, Richard. Yes.
I don't know where the phone's at, but if there's a podium, I'm having a little trouble hearing.
Okay, hold on. Ronnie, hold on one second.
Podium?
Well, that's cool.
Maybe by the speaker. Or maybe by the speaker where it's going to cut out.
Just put it up on the podium.
Put it on the podium.
Well, that'll...okay.
Is that all right?
Yeah. They'll amplify his sound too, though, if he makes any sound. Just saying.
Tell him to mute himself.
Then he can't complain anymore.
Richard, you're on mute, so you can't really say anything, but I've got you on the podium. Is Shelley's phone on?
Don't be afraid, he's an air...
Person on Shelley's phone, can you hear me?
He can't say anything.
He can't say anything.
Well, assume yes.
He'll call me if there's a problem.
Good evening, guys. I'm Ronnie Quinn. I am a 2002 Quincy Public...I lost him.
He's speaking.
He's speaking.
How is he speaking? I heard him say, "You lost me."
Can you hear us now?
I can hear you. I can hear you now.
Oh, yeah. That's what I did. That's what I did.
What'd you do?
Nothing. Don't worry about it.
He muted the wrong way. It's all good.
Sorry, Ronnie. Sorry, Richard. All right, we're good now.
Said muted you, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I don't know. Okay, go.
I am a 2002 Quincy Public School alumni, and this year I will actually have two children in the Quincy Public School system. Both will be in the fifth grade. It's no secret that I have been a very vocal person regarding the restrictions or guidelines that have been implemented the last school year. At that time, I seemed to be the only parent who had the courage to stand up and speak out. I was personally crucified by the public for daring to do so. I've even gained a few nicknames in the process: Rowan Queen, QPS Karen, and Karani Virus, to name a few. They've even attacked my child. I make no apologies for standing up and speaking my mind and standing 100% behind my morals While being frustrated last year that no one else seemed to come forward then, I am grateful for those who have the courage now. I knew it was only a matter of time, so here we are. We're approaching another school year, the second since COVID started. And it seems that everyone is in a horrible breakup with COVID, that they lack the ability to make sound personal choices, that they rely on the heavily regurgitated insanity that seems to play like a broken record on all media outlets, and they simply cannot let it go, no matter how many times they are told they are better off without it. All we keep hearing is the science, the science this, the science that, but let's go there. What science is QPS using to make these choices? We've actually requested in an email from one of your board members to show us proof of the science. The response that we got was actually the response we thought we were going to get: a big nothing burger. We just wanted to make sure that we had proof of the nonproof that was being used to make these decisions. We also keep hearing the CDC, ISB, Adams County Health Department, Illinois Department of Public Health, insurance, and so on. Where do we, the people, get a voice? Have you, school board, forgotten the hierarchy of governance when it comes to local school districts?
Travis?
This board and many others across the state have forgotten that we, the people, elect you. We elect you to carry out our wishes and how we think our schools should be ran. Mr. Webb made a Facebook post regarding the upcoming guidance for the school year. In this post, he stated, and I quote, "It is not written for your child. It is written for 8,000 students and staff." While I agree with the first sentence, I actually disagree with the second. It is not written for my child. And I'm going to ask this audience to raise their hand if Mr. Webb sent you an email or called you or made any other form of contact to ask you what you wanted for this school year. Anybody? So it also does not speak for the students, the staff, or the parents. It was written for you, by your attorney, in an attempt to appease ISB, the Adams County Health Department, the Illinois Department of Public Health, and any other unelected bureaucracy that you think you're at the mercy of. The truth is, it's not any of those agencies that should concern you. It's every individual standing behind me that should concern you. It's not the other way around, and I can assure you that we are tired of you not listening There's a platform called Survey Monkey. Sure, we've heard of it. It could have been utilized to send out a district-wide survey asking any input for the upcoming school year to every parent, every student, and every staff member. Why didn't you? Why didn't you find a way to ask every parent or student what they wanted? I can tell you why. Because for the last 16, 19 months, I don't even know, I've lost count, not the board, not Roy, not ISB, not the Adams County Health Department, none of you have personally asked the parents or the students within your district, those that you work for, what they want. So we are here tonight because we understand that we have the power. We have the rights as parents and as individuals. So let's dissect this new guidance that was recommended just yesterday.
Yeah, you're...we're at time. If you want to wrap in.
The way this new guidance is worded, again, takes away the power from we, the people. It is written in a way that would allow you to make any changes to these guidelines at any point in time without a board vote or without the permission from we, the people. That's not sufficient. It needs changed. Unequivocal opportunity to agree or disagree, and then after that has taken place, we, the people, can present you with our guidance, and you, as a board, can vote to either approve or disapprove it. We're in charge. Quarantines. In Roy's guidance, he states that if students, and I quote, "If students...if a student is required to quarantine per guidance from the local health department or Illinois Department of Public Health, parents or guardians will work with their child's school on a plan for alternate instruction during the duration of the quarantine." He goes on further to say that, and I quote, "The nurses will be following the CDC, Illinois Department of Public Health, or Health Department guidelines to determine when a student needs quarantine. Unvaccinated students will be placed in quarantine if they are in close contact to a positive COVID person. Those vaccinated will only quarantine if they show symptoms." I'm going to assume that Mr. Penn has also conferred with you on this and is able, ready, and willing to obtain a court order for every individual that you think should quarantine. Because you see, there's a law, and it's 20ILCS 2305, and it states, "No person or a group of persons may be ordered to be quarantined or isolated, and no place may be ordered to be closed and made off limits to the public except with the consent of the person or the owner of the place or upon the prior order of a court of complete jurisdiction or competent jurisdiction." Any of you had a school student that was quarantined this last year?
No.
Were any of you presented with an order of quarantine?
No.
I didn't think so. I'm going to assume that you guys will issue one of these for every quarantine that you plan to take this year. You do not have the legal authority to quarantine any individual or group without a court order. Illinois Department of Public Health does not have the legal authority to quarantine any individual or group without a court order. Last year, you quarantined numerous staff and children. I was going to assume that for every individual that you told they had to quarantine, you had this on file. I don't think that you do. Additionally, per ISB and the resolution that they passed, every individual has to be allowed in-person learning. Only when a person having been considered a close contact or is unvaccinated and a quarantine order has been obtained will they be considered for remote learning. So again, you've got to have a court order to quarantine those individuals in order for them to be eligible for remote learning.
Hey, Ronnie. We're at about nine minutes, just so you know.
I'm almost done. I'll actually skip a little bit. So moving on, I'm going to skip a whole bunch because I'm being told I'm completely out of time, which is appropriate. But I just want to know...
That's ridiculous.
I'm sorry?
Richard could be talking to one of 100 different people, probably.
Yeah. Go ahead, Ronnie. I don't think that was to you.
I'm going to skip a lot of my stuff.
She speaks for a lot of us, and we want to have her speak, and we, the people, are saying, we give her our time.
Last year, I chose to keep my daughter in remote learning due to the mask requirement. At the beginning of second quarter, we decided to try to put her back into in-person because that's what she wanted so badly. She wanted to see her friends in person, she wanted to see her teachers and the fellow staff that she has come to love over the course of the last four years being in that school. So we tried it. I masked her up, took her to school, and prayed everything would go as well. I returned to pick her up, anxious to hear all about her day. It was not a good day. In fact, she told me it was the worst day of her life. Crying, she stated that she was not allowed to sit next to her friends at lunch, she was not allowed to interact with any child outside of her own classroom, she hated the mask, and when they went to the library, they had to wear gloves just to touch a book. I was floored at the absurdity this district has resorted to. You may call it being safe and/or guidance, or whatever you want to call it. I call it draconian. To subject these young people to such stringent extremes in an environment that's supposed to be happy, one that they enjoy coming to every day, that was not the case for my child. We decided that she was not going back to in-person until these restrictions were lifted. And you can preach to me all day long about how resilient our children are and how well they have adjusted to it. They've adjusted because they have been forced to. They didn't have a choice, and who knows how badly this may or may not affect them in the future. Which brings me to my next point. Who put all of you in charge of making decisions for my child? Who decided that I have no say-so as to what happens in this school year regarding my child? Who decided that you know my child better than me? And I will keep reminding you that you work for us. My niece and nephew were both quarantined two times last year in the third and fourth quarters. They were told that they either had to present a negative COVID test or provide a doctor's excuse before they could return. They both were out because they live in the same household. They were out because my niece had a bellyache. So automatically, they were told they had to go quarantine. She had to poop and was embarrassed to do so at school. But automatically, two children out of school for 10 days, and then they had to turn around and pay well over $300 for a telehealth visit and a doctor's excuse just to come back. That happened twice. We shouldn't have to force our children to be tested or forced to have them seen by a doctor because you think you know better than the parents themselves. It should never be a this or a that or else. Who put you in charge to make these decisions for my child? Who decided that I have no say-so? This is a communist, Soviet-style process, and it ends today. This is America, and we are no longer cowering to the garbage guidelines that are being dished out like a one-size-fits-all blanket. We will decide what our children need and when they need it. You can all go back to doing your jobs of teaching basic courses such as math, reading, and science. As far as I'm aware, none of you are a medical professional, none of you, nor do you know every student individually, and you absolutely do not get to take personal medical decisions. You do not get to make personal or medical decisions for our children any longer. You work for us. We have our guidelines. We want no mask. It can be optional. If you want to wear a mask, wear a mask, and even on buses, because apparently now you can only catch COVID on a bus. No quarantines unless you have a court order. No more restrictions in our classrooms, our playgrounds, or our cafeterias. And no additional restrictions or guidelines shoved down our throats unless we are asked and we have full participation in creating those guidelines. And then these guidelines should be voted on by you guys that we elected. The hierarchy of governance shall be restored to we, the people. Anything less than this is unacceptable because we are in charge and we will vote you out.
Hi, I'm Alora Severt. I do a ton of public speaking. A ton. And this is, gosh, more hard than I expected. You know, I know who gave you guys the power to make a decision. It's the voters, right? I mean, that's why you're here. And it's really hard in Quincy to stand up for what you think sometimes, because it's not always easy to say...you know, the reason I thought that I should speak today is I got a six-year-old going to second grade, and his best friend is a second grader or two who has cancer. Been fighting it all year, you know? And, you know, if my kid catches COVID, hopefully he'd be all right. I mean, I can't promise he'd be all right. I hope he'd be all right. But his little buddy might not, and some kid with terrible palsy or asthma or diabetes might not. You know, we saw a good experiment this summer with some of the church camps and things that have had some outbreaks, and it's tragic anytime anybody catches COVID, but it must be awfully painful to have a 16-year-old in the hospital with a disease that's killed so many people and has lasting effects. And we saw it happen right here, right? We saw 400 people in a building and, you know, 30% of them got it, and four of them ended up in the hospital. And I've been in a hospital overnight with my boys on different occasions, and there's nothing scarier. So while this might not be the most friendly room for this sentiment, my guys also can't get vaccinated yet. I'm on the vaccination team, I'm out in the community trying to get people vaccinated, but my boys are young. My husband works at the school, he's vaccinated, and he's done a great job teaching. And as a matter of fact, to accommodate students, he has a student with a hearing disability, he got one of the clear masks for teaching that hour. Wasn't a problem. My kids didn't have a problem wearing masks, it wasn't a big deal. But it might be a big deal to Levi. He might get this in. It might be really, really bad. I don't...this room is hard, you know, right now, but what worked last year for this board and for this school district and the reason that you guys stayed open, which was really, I didn't think it'd happen, I thought we'd be shut down, Roy, I thought we'd be shut down in a week, and we stayed open where a lot of places didn't, and I think it was because we said our kids are mature enough and they can handle masking and washing hands and even storytime in the young kids, being spread out, it worked, it's what worked. So, you know, especially for 12 and under, but maybe for everybody, we have to think of the kids most likely to have problems because it's who's looking out for those kids? We just have to, so. I know this is a hard decision for you guys because the CDC and all of those things didn't come out down with a little bit harder, more direct information, but, you know, we... They could have come with a little more backing for the school districts, and I wish they had, but because they didn't, it's up to you guys to protect. they had. But because they didn't, it's up to you guys to protect the kid with cancer.
Hi, my name's Charlie, and I work in IT.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I didn't catch. What was your name?
My name is Charlie Klingel, and I work in IT.
Got it.
I'd like to consider myself somewhat of a professional in my job. One of the things about my job is that people come to me to trust me to make their things work, work properly, so that they can teach these kids, so that they can get a proper education every day that they come to school and go home for remote learning. I have a piece. I am a piece of the social structure. I maintain a sense of social responsibility. The one thing I did last year to ensure the safety of everyone that I encountered was wash my hands, sanitize, and wore a mask. Why? Because I wanted to make sure that if I touched one computer at the high school, I didn't take it to Lincoln Douglas and infect another kid. I did not want to be a part of the problem. I wanted to be a part of the solution. We have that chance right now to change things for the better. We can be the solution that everyone so desperately needs right now. We can maintain social responsibility and social integrity. I understand that people want the right to a choice, but I have the right to a safe working environment, a right to come to my job and not be afraid that I'm going to get sick and possibly die of a lethal contagious virus. There is another strain out there that the vaccine does not 100% save us from. That's been shown. I have issues with the fact that we're making it highly recommended instead of required. I feel like that if you are unvaccinated, that is a choice you made, that is a freedom you have. But as a part of that, the trade-off is you wear a mask. That's it.
Oh, hey. Uh, you left your phone, I believe, or was that still-
That's Richard.
Oh, that's right. Okay.
That's our seventh board member.
You still there?
Yeah.
Richard?
You can put it down.
Okay, cool. I'm Amber. Hello. My name is Amber Smith, and I graduated from here in 2003. High honors. And I continued on with my education at Colerstockton, also high honors. So I got a wide variety of things. I would love to say I was even a business owner for a short time. And I'm not telling you this to brag. I'm telling you this because I would like to think that I could come to you as a member of the community that you could maybe trust to know that I can use critical thinking. I aced everything from art history to microbiology and human anatomy, psychology, you name it. At one point, I wanted to be a nurse. The only reason why I didn't become a nurse back in the day was because I saw that the system was corrupt. Over the last year and a half here, I have done nothing but prove that to myself even more. So my studies have focused beyond my education to the realms of natural healing. I love to use essential oils. I've even dabbled in energy healing, believe it or not, and it is real. I have felt it. I have seen it. There are realms of that that are real. And yoga. So let's just say that I'm really open to pretty much any experience you can have that may be helpful to somebody. That is what I'm all about. So why is it that energy healing, let's say, is not taught in schools? Why is it that we call it the World Health Organization, but there's not a single natural path on the board or committee, any part of it? The answer is it's because it's nothing more than an echo chamber for Big Pharma, plain and simple. We want to trust the science. It's more like dogma, if you ask me. And over the last year and a half, I don't think there's anybody else in this room who would dare say that I have studied vaccine injury and ineffectivity from previous vaccines as much as I have. And I, myself, am actually vaccine-damaged. So I will speak for that issue, big time. I got meningitis from the HPV vaccine and almost died. I might not be in this room because of a vaccine. How does that sound? Trust the science. How about Pfizer getting sued for $2.3 billion? Why? Fraud. Manipulation of statistics. Why do you not know this? Censored. Why do you not know about energy healing and natural medicine? Censored. Why did we not hear about how we can boost our immune system during the whole plandemic? Yes, that's right. I said it. Censored. Why do we not know for sure if it's made in a lab or not? And I've seen the evidence from experts in virology from the Level IV labs who know what they're talking about. Why do we not know for sure? Censored. I have a mountain of evidence that could prove that masks are bad for you, that masks are ineffective. But I don't want to spend my precious five minutes regurgitating something that you should have already learned for yourselves. And I am sorry to say that, but it was a long, hard road for me to come to that place, too, because I am actually immune-compromised myself because of the vaccine, because I've been sick as shit since I've got that vaccine years ago. I get everything that comes along. So I was scared as anybody else when this started. But you know what? I listened to some of the censored doctors. I paid attention to some of the studies that they brought up. Even some of the study is back from the '70s, believe it or not, on how masks are ineffective. Actual surgeons doing the studies, teams of scientists looking at this information, trying different kinds of masks even. Not only are they ineffective, but they found that it does, in fact, increase the carbon monoxide and dioxide, and it actually decreases your oxygen. You know what happens in that body? That's a weak immune system, is what that is. And how does it make you feel? Let's just discuss that. The psychology behind the mask. I think we've all felt that. So why do we not know these things? Why do you guys sit here before me, half of you masked, half of you unmasked? Because some of that information is kept from you. When you had to provide the science to somebody who asked for the science as to why we're still masking our kids, and you couldn't provide that, it's because that science is actually fraudulent, and they have a really hard time coming up with it. One study, they even tried to say that they had two different boxes of mice and stuck a mask inside, like the holes in between the two boxes of mice, and somehow they proved that the mask contained contagion. I don't think so, guys. If you start diving deeper into the science, you will find that what we're being fed is propaganda, not science. So, that being said, also, as far as censorship goes, why did we not know that hydroxychloroquine was helpful right off the bat when there was doctors in Texas protesting this with thousands of people watching? Thousands of people heard this and knew. Why did we not know? I couldn't even share it on Facebook before it got censored. So why is hydroxychloroquine and all these other things demonized, suppressed? Why? I'll give you one answer for that, and that's the most important thing to take away from this. It goes like this. The Emergency Youth Authorization that they put in place, or the EUA, Emergency Youth Authorization. It changed a bunch of things as far as our medical ethics practices. One thing that it states specifically is you can only do trials for a medical vaccine or other treatment if there is no other approved or adequate available alternatives. Convinced that it's propaganda yet? I'm going to keep taking it further as far as law and history. World War II is something I'm really fond of personally because my grandpa Smith was in World War II, and I had a lot of discussions with him that even while practicing my speech, I cried to myself because he fought during a time when only few people were really realizing the tyranny, and only few people did something about it. We know it is history now. Well, something big came from that, though. Who in here knows what the Nuremberg Codes are? Who in here has actually read the Nuremberg Codes? This is a big one, guys. This is not just something that happened in history. This is something that is supposed to be upheld by every medical professional today. This is law. It's got 10 points that are major. I'm going to only focus on one. The voluntary consent in the human subject is absolutely essential. This means that the person involved should have legal capacity to give consent. So anybody under the age of 18, right here, that states it's illegal to have anybody under legal consenting age to do a medical experiment. This also, this person should also be so situated as to be able to exercise free power of choice without intervention of any element of force, fraud, deceit, duress, or overreaching. Who else here feels like that's what exactly lockdown was about? Overreach, duress, definitely sounds like lockdown. Element of force, yes. And let's talk about fraud. I mentioned the deal with Pfizer already, right? Well, I believe it's Moderna. They've never made a vaccine before, ever. And let's get one thing perfectly clear. They're not vaccines. We had to define them as such. So even calling them vaccines is fraud. There's actually lawyers that have been going after this for months. I'm not blowing smoke. There's cases that are active because fraudulent advertising is being done. If you look at how vaccines in the past have worked, this is new science. This is new ingredients. It's new everything. And speaking of censorship, did you ever hear that in the first coronavirus experiments with the mRNA technology, all of the animals died once they encountered the virus? Who knows this? This is why they didn't continue with human trials. I'm dead serious. That is why they stopped. And the research that was done with that is combined with the research that was done on the coronavirus to make it more virulent, to make it more transmissible to humans. It's a coronavirus that's been taken from bats, combined with parts of the HIV virus and parts of malaria. Microbiologists and virologists have proven this, genetically proven this. Why do we not know this indefinitely? It's censored. I've screen-recorded people talking in courts. I've screen-recorded rooms like this, people bringing evidence, people showing evidence on their screen and flipping it so that you can see it. I've seen graphs. I've seen data. I could give you all the information you need to change every mind in this room if you still follow these draconian rules. So, that's only one aspect of fraud, another being the test. Many doctors and scientists, again, experts in virology who have been censored over the last year and a half, have proven, using other forms of tests in comparison, that the coronavirus test can be manipulated and has been. Check this. The inventor of the PCR test, Carey Mullis, they've even censored some of his videos from the '90s of him saying that you cannot use this test to diagnose. Period. And why? If you manipulate the test enough, you could turn the cycles up on the test to the point where everyone in this room would have coronavirus. It's been proven with science. They actually changed the cycles on the test so that the cases would decrease on inauguration day. If that starts to ring any bells as far as it being political or not. And I don't care who you voted for. I'm not even going to get into that other issue that we have at hand because I want to focus on the next generation and the importance of that. And I know my history, and I want this history to carry on. Back to the Nuremberg Codes.
Amber, just so you know, we're about 14 minutes.
Okay, thank you. I really appreciate it. You should have sufficient knowledge and comprehensive elements so that you can understand the subject matter involved as to enable him to make an understanding and enlightened decision. So in other words, what's the golden rule with vaccines, everybody? Informed consent, right? Well, question is, how can we have informed consent with all of these doctors being censored and all of this information that I just presented to you being censored for a year and a half? How could you possibly make a sane decision? Or what about this? Facebook actually colluding with the government. They came right out and said it recently. The Secretary of State said, "We're working with Facebook to silence disinformation that has to do with the vaccine." I've lived that over the last year and a half. I can vouch for that one. I shared some of the information from a doctor who was in Ireland, standing right in front of the Irish version of the CDC, saying they have never isolated the virus. Here is the proof. It's right up there. We're trying to ask somebody what the science is behind the masks. They come up with nothing. We get these stories that they've isolated it, this and that and the other thing. But when the real, when the real experts look at it, they have not done it properly. They have not actually isolated it. So back to the fraud, right? It's impossible to know and to make a good decision. So informed consent goes clear back to the Nuremberg Codes. It's as if these codes were written for this very situation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Bach Nelson. Thank you, board members who took the time to read my email. I talked about my son was diagnosed with type 1 diabetes this year. Completely healthy kid out of nowhere, no genetic history. The best they can tell is that a virus triggered it. He had the antibiotics. It would have been triggered at some point in his life. It just happened to be this year. So I know how hard it is to spend the night with your kid in the ICU, watching his levels try to get back to normal. He's also at a higher risk now if he were to get COVID or any other virus. Thankfully, both my sons are in high school this year and are vaccinated, so I do feel like they have a level of protection. So I won't get up here and talk about viruses or the different variants or what Greek alphabet number we're on now. What I want to talk about is a book that meant a lot to me as a former college educator. It's by Tom Nichols, and it's called The Death of Expertise. It's by Tom Nichols and it's called The Death of Expertise. And what we see happening is this sentiment that experts are wrong. Experts have gone into these fields and they don't know what they're talking about. And somehow by looking at the data, I, as a person not in the field, know just as much as they do. And it's sad. I look at my high schoolers who are both going into math and science fields and I wonder what we're teaching them. If instead of looking and listening to experts, we look to populist movements, whose voice is the loudest, at who declares, "I have my rights. I will be heard," rather than demonstrating to our students that we do listen to experts. We look at the data. We look at the information coming down from different organizational bodies. We listen to the attorney that our county has hired. We don't go to Facebook to get legal advice. We don't go to Facebook and YouTube to get medical advice. I would encourage you as a board to not give way to public sentiment. And it is the popular way. It's the majority here in Quincy. You're going to get lambasted. Your name is going to be put on Facebook. You're going to join our public health administrator and be called names. But at a certain point, we need to demonstrate to QPS students that it's not about what is popular. It's about what has been shown empirically through science and interpreted by experts who know what they're talking about. So as you make your decisions, I would encourage you to not give way to popular movements and to follow the experts. Thank you.
My name is Tori Kaufman. I'm a single dad and have custody of my daughter. She'll be in Quincy Junior High this year. I've been an avid anti-masker. I told Said I'd make no qualms about that. I've got some stuff I want to say to you guys as a parent and somebody who is part of this community. I'm not going to go over my five minutes, so. Of the 16 full months since COVID began, it's been roughly 14 of those months that we know children are not good transmitters of COVID. They rarely get seriously ill from it. And the flu is basically worse for them. Official death numbers last year showed twice as many kids died from the flu as opposed to COVID. More children died from suicide last year than COVID. Those are the numbers. Yet we're here tonight talking about putting a third straight year of restrictions on the least vulnerable among us. I mean, literally, the kids in school is the safest place to be on this planet right now. It doesn't make any logical sense to me why we would destroy their lives again. I mean, look at these X's on the floor, the sign, "Masks have to be worn when you're standing or walking through a line." I mean, it's like we're in Moscow in the 80s. We're 14 months into this. We know it's rarely more than a mild cold for almost all kids. We know exactly who has issues with COVID and who doesn't. Older or obese people, or if you have a pre-existing condition. I had pericarditis 10 years ago when I lived in Colorado. I have a pre-existing condition. I'm not going to live my life in fear because I could get the flu and that could trigger Under 18, there is literally no health risk to you at all. None. Schools were open across the country last year and there was not one major outbreak tied to schools, not one. Our children have done their part. It is time to end COVID tyranny and it needs to give them back their freedom, friendships, activities, lives, and lunches this year. They've got to be able to sit. My daughter sat at the cafeteria table three times a week with one other kid at the other end. They can't even talk to each other. I mean, what do you, we all look forward to recess, gym class, lunch. I mean, what are we doing to our kids, seriously? COVID restrictions, not COVID, have taken a devastating toll on our kids' happiness and their emotional growth. And we don't need a six-figure study or an attorney to figure that out. You merely have to be mildly observant. I appreciate Mr. Webb. He always, probably gets more emails in this town than anybody and he always responds. So I do appreciate it, even though I don't always agree with you. So thank you for that. Shelley, I'm a tennis fan. I read the article, so congrats on that.
He's better than me.
Oh, I'm not going to play either. But I do have a problem, Mr. Webb, that I understand you're saying we have to do what's best for 8,000 students, but I disagree. We're doing what makes unelected bureaucrats feel better about themselves, is what we're We're destroying what made school special and fun for all of us. Human interaction, playing sports, playing with your friends. And then we've got this local health czar, Jared Welch, never mentions the enormous negative impact his guidance has on our kids. And I'm sick and tired of this unelected bureaucrat who does not have a medical background being leaned on so heavily. He's drunk on his 15 minutes of fame. And other than making sure the lunch ladies and fellows in cafeterias like this are following the proper food handling guidelines, we need to stop looking to him to tell us how to run our schools. Mr. Webb knows how to run the schools. Said and the board know how to make decisions. We know how to make decisions for our children and what is an acceptable risk. And if the flu kills two times as many kids as COVID, well, hell, why are we doing all this? I mean, seriously? Makes no logical sense whatsoever. And, I mean, we've been clamoring, all of us, all summer, Mr. Webb included, for local control, and that's exactly what we got, thankfully. Finally, there's no threats of funding or retaliation. It's up to you guys to do the right thing. We can no longer take inaction and blame it on some distant official in Chicago or Springfield. It's up to you guys to do the right thing. Myself and others in the room went along last year because we agreed and conceded that in-person learning, even with a mask on, was better than the alternative. And it was better. You made the right decision. Thank you. But we're not going to go along with another year of insane restrictions or some wishy-washy compromise that they can wear them in, don't have to wear them in the classroom, but on the bus or an assembly. I mean, come on. If you're in a cla, we're all sitting here. Half of you guys don't have masks. I mean, why? I mean, there's no science whatsoever behind any restrictions this year, even less common sense. Enough is enough. Parents know what's best for their kids. If you want to wear a mask, wear a mask. If you don't want to, don't. Inserting another year of restrictions is just, it's either ignorant of the real science or it's a willingness to impose COVID tyranny over people who never want this thing to end. Almost done. Senator and Dr. Rand Paul recently said, "In our free country, people evaluate their personal risk factors and are smart enough to ultimately make medical decisions like wearing a mask." You guys are the decision makers. I hope you do the right thing. I know we're probably not going to get no restrictions, but that's what you should do. And I will just say that if we can't bring ourselves to do the right thing now, when are we going to do the right thing? And there will be more people on the ballot next time if we can't do it now.
My name, my name's Steve Lucy. I'm not from here. I'm from Baskerville, Illinois. Couple of things I just have a slight problem with is, the one guy was talking about the bridge. We have a choice whether to drive on that bridge or not. We have, we have a choice. That's, that's, that's a risk. I take a risk every day. I'm taking a risk right now because I'm wiping my hands all over this podium where a nice young lady was up here emotionally with her mask, wiping it all over this thing. That's something that we all do. And that is a problem with masks in school. And I know you guys know that. I want to talk more about a couple of things, more the growth of our children and our freedoms. There's a saying up by me. It says, "The weeds are high where corn don't grow." And our kids are like that corn. They're not growing right now. We've had them for a year separated from each other. We've had them with masks on. They haven't been able to see their teachers' faces. They haven't been able to see their friends' faces. And their growth and emotional growth, educational growth, has been stunted because of that. And I don't want to see that happen again to our youth because if the weeds grow up of mental illness and lack of cognitive function and they can't learn reading as fast, you know, if you don't, if you're not on grade level reading by age, second grade, that it's almost statistically impossible to get back to grade level reading by the time you're a senior in high school. They know that. My wife's a reading specialist. That stuff is proven. So our youth, if we don't let them grow, then that is our future and they won't sit here on a board to make decisions and have the cognitive function that you guys have if we continue to suppress them. And I think that's the biggest concern I see. As far as your community goes, there's obviously a lot of opinions and I'm not going to try to sway that. That's, that's life. That's part of it. And I know that Said knows that. He's dealt with it a lot. I would just say that choice is something that we all have to do every day. We all have to make a choice in our life every day. When I work at home, I make a choice sometimes of what's going to be risky or what's not. You guys do that, too. When you drive through town, if you're in a hurry or something, you go over the speed limit, you make that choice. And I know you've sat down and wrote a policy out. Mr. Webb's done a nice job. I read it. It follows the guidelines. I'm here to tell you from a person that's seen other school districts do different things, that you can go further with that if you want to. Warsaw did that in June. They did not have any issues with that. They still have not had any issues with that. In fact, the superintendent and the lawyer and the school board president have all contacted me and said that they are on solid ground with that. So I think some people might have emailed you that information. Liberty did it the other night. The lawyer knows that. That's for you guys to decide if you want to go that route. But the one thing I think that that does is that eliminates Mr. Webb from having to worry about anything the rest of the year here. That gives the choice to all the parents to do what they feel best. And yeah, the little, the little one with cancer, that is a concern. I would be concerned, again, opinions, I would be concerned on the other side if I was around that child and another child had a mask on that might have had COVID, then he's spewing COVID out through the mask and nebulizing the particles even further, possibly making it worse. So I mean, there's both sides of the fence. If you leave it up to parents' choice, you take all the liability away from you. If you don't do that, if you don't do that, then you assume some liability. Then you're assuming that you are either listening to doctors who may be wrong or health department people who may be wrong, or you're assuming yourself that you know, you know, more than a parent. I had a little kid named Will and he was not able to speak well when he was in school and they wanted to do speech with him. I wasn't sure about it. My wife, you know, she said, "Steve, we got to do this." They wouldn't do it unless we signed off on it, just to get him speech in school. You have to sign off on everything you do in public school for your kids. If you want to give them Tylenol, you have to sign off and tell them it's okay for the nurse to give them Tylenol. That kid, Will, he went on and did pretty good in life and he wouldn't have if we hadn't have made that choice. But that was our choice to make as parents. It wasn't an administrator's choice. It wasn't a school board's choice. It was the parents' choice and they do that with special ed, with everything. The parents have to choose. So I guess I would just reiterate the fact that if we let our parents choose how they want their kids to grow, then we won't be overcome with weeds. We'll have a nice, beautiful stand of children that'll grow up and they'll be good, solid individuals and come back to your community. And this is a beloved community. This is like my second home down here at Quincy and I love it. That's why I made the trip to come down here instead of staying in Hancock County. The only other thing I'll say is, I know the lawyer, he's heard me say this, he probably thinks I'm a broken record, but our liberties are the most important thing to me. And that starts with our children's rights. I believe, I believe that our children have the same rights as we do as adults, especially when it comes to their health. And not, not, not any of us have hardly asked the children in education what they think. We just tell that they're resilient. And they are resilient. But after so long of it, if you keep beating someone down, beating someone down, unless they have an extraordinary constitution where they can stand up against you, and that's very rare in this society anymore, unless they have that, many kids will just fold and they'll just do what the adults say or the teachers say. So I guess I'm asking you, give the kids the same rights as we have as adults. The Declaration of Independence gave, gave us those rights. The Constitution then was ratified to secure that. And I want to see that go on in our society. And if we continue down this path, I promise you, we're going to be in a situation where none of us want to be in. And I bet you, Mr. Webb, knows that very well. Just give that thought as you move through tonight and if you wish not to bring forth a different resolution that someone have maybe presented to you and you, you know, follow Mr. Webb's advice, I understand that, I respect that. I will say this, I don't think any of, any of these people want to go backwards this year. And I know you guys don't either. We have some catching up to do with our kids and education and I hope you guys at Quincy do that, too. Thank you.
I'll be super quick and set a timer. My name is Jennifer Weemelt. I have three kids in the district, seven total. I have three in college and one in a private school. I've been before, you guys, before. Was a little more nervous back then. Maybe I will be tonight, too. But I have a couple of points to make. Governments were instituted to secure our rights and our rights are to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. We don't have a right to safety, except if we pursue that ourselves, right? And that's what all we're asking for tonight. We want the right, since we hold the liability for our children. When our children get sick, we take them to the doctor. When they need vaccinated, we vaccinate them. We do the research. We buckle them into a car. We make sure that they are safe and we're asking for that right back. Okay? There's, there's a lot of guidance that can be given to us, of course, if we want, oh, wrong phone. If we want to prevent 100% of drownings, then we just don't swim. Is that right? We could, we could prevent 100% of drownings by not swimming. And there are parents to choose to not take their children to swim because they can't swim or they're afraid of the water. That's their choice. That's the parental choice. And we could prevent all drownings if we didn't. But we still choose to live our life. We assess that risk as parents, all of us do, every single day. We assess the risk. I've got three kids driving and about to have three more. I can tell you, I spend most of my day praying for all of you on the road. So, I mean, could I prevent all accidents by telling them they can't drive? I sure could. I sure could. I would have 100% success rate if they were not driving. But we have to assess that risk and say, is it worth you not living your life? What we are worried about, and I do want to speak to some of the people that did bring up concerns about unmasking or making it optional. We're not trying to say that we're unempathetic to the, to the weakest among us, those that have immune, immune issues. We're not trying to say that. We're saying that we're not going to presume that we know better than they do on how to protect their child. There is remote learning. There are masking options that they can still do. And, and when the vaccine is available to them, they certainly can. But what we're worried about is the psychological effects that this is having on our children. We are, we are putting a mask over their face and we're not letting them see and have human interaction.
And that's very difficult, especially for children. I'm a CASA volunteer and I'm telling you right now, that was traumatic for those kids to watch me walk in with a mask and tell them not to touch me. You know what they wanted to do? They wanted to hug me. And I'm sure all of you as educators have experienced that. So what we're asking is for you, we don't want to go backwards. I actually don't think that your guidance is too far off, I thought it was very well thought out, but we don't want to go backwards. We don't want the governor in Chicago, some faraway spot that we, we have to, we have to live different here than they do. He has to do things different up there than we do here. But he's giving a one-size-fits-all guidance and we don't want to go backwards. And that's why we're asking you to take that stand. That's why we're asking you to pass a resolution telling us that in our community, we have the right to make decisions for our students. We have the right to make decisions as parents for our children. That's what we want. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Are there any other comments from the public? If not, oh, there is.
Not what I was planning on doing tonight at all. I'm Michelle McMillan, I'm from Liberty, so I don't speak for Quincy because my kids don't go here. I was supposed to be in St. Louis right now. I was canceled because of my choice of to get vaccinated or not. So the event I was supposed to be at tonight canceled me. And I felt like that was God telling me, "You need to go to Quincy." And I did not plan on speaking, I have nothing written. But Mr. Penn met with me Monday night in Liberty and I asked our school board Monday, "Show me the law that requires masks and show me the law that requires quarantines." I'm still waiting for that to be sent to me. It doesn't exist. And you guys are given directions, same as our school board in Liberty was, that you would be held liable and the school is held liable. And that is completely false. In the dead of night, J. Carr tried to take that away from you guys. But Illinois citizens stood up for what was right and House Bill 2789 did not pass the Senate. By Illinois state law and the Constitution of the United States, you have local control. You always have had local control. We don't need IDPH, ISB coming to tell us how you guys should be living in Quincy, Illinois. Your constituents are speaking, you guys need to listen. Stop letting this state bully you. I gave up 23 years in a marriage to a man that served in the military. We went through several deployments, my kids lost years with their dad. And gosh dang it, we live in America is the land of the free and we have to start acting like it. You know, in Liberty, we have two families and we're a small community. We had about 300 show up in our gym on Monday night. We have a small community and when a child is fighting cancer, we all know it and we all rally around them. And when I decided that I had to go further with this four months ago, I went to those two families in our community where their child's fighting cancer and I asked them, "How do you feel about the mask being made optional?" And those two sets of parents said to me, "Our children need to be free." They have the choice to mask their child that is at risk. The crazy thing is, is they chose not to mask their other children. Their other children were playing ball with us if somewhere out in the field without a mask. What they are asking for tonight is their choice. We are free to choose what we do with our children. I didn't go to social media for my data. I went to lawyers, I went to doctors, I went to insurance agents, I went to the six board members, we added a seventh on Monday, but I went to them and I said, "What are you guys scared of? I will get you the answers, I will pay for a lawyer to speak to you, what are you scared of?" They were given direction by our school attorney, but I am so thankful that our board stood up for our kids on Monday night. Our school board did their own research. They didn't rely on one man to make their decisions. So I'm asking you guys, it is time to stand up. Stand up for your constitutional rights, stand up for your community, and stand up for your students. Thank you.